Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Wednesday, September fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. I declare the meeting open at six P M.
Awesome.
Please rise to the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands one nation under God.
Thank you. To approve the warrants, W R twenty-five dash five, what would the board like to do about that?
I move we approve the warrant, warrants W R twenty-five dash zero five.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do approve the minutes of July twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, and July seventh. I'm sorry, July twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four executive session minutes.
I move that we accept the minutes from July twenty-ninth for the regular meeting and July twenty-ninth for the executive session.
Is this over with?
I thought it was.
Wasn't there some follow-up that was gonna be done?
Thirty-day follow-up.
I'll approve the minutes as written not to be released.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public session. Anybody for public session tonight? That means anyone that's not on the agenda but has some concerns for us to address? No? Okay, we'll continue with our regular agenda. North Brookfield Road speed concerns. We have representatives from that area of one forty-eight, and do you have somebody to present your case of what you would like to see or your concern? Okay.
I will take lead, and I know that everybody else would like to say a few things about their experiences.
Okay.
But all right, if I stand here. So my name is Peter Anson. I live sixteen thirty-two North Brookfield Road, but next to Lincoln Road. First off, thank you for giving us the time today, Mary Bell. Thank you for the awesome agenda. So on North Brookfield Road, essentially between where Corner Road and Robinson Road, as you know, the speed limit's forty. People are consistently going much faster than that, and the speed is one concern, the recklessness is another. I have witnessed cars multiple times pass people right in front of my house. I live directly across from Karen. She sees it too. She's told me that a long time back that was a passing zone, so I don't know, but they still think it is apparently. Beyond that, we have eighteen-wheelers that are going very fast. They often use a gear-shifting brake method. If you know what that sounds like, it's very loud. You have to stop, yeah, yeah, you have to stop talking to whoever you're talking to and wait for them to pass. Theoretically, if they were going a reasonable speed, they probably wouldn't have to do that. The noise isn't really the concern, it's how fast they're going as they go by. Really, in the past year, there's been a huge increase of adults and kids riding bikes, jogging. There's even some folks that push a stroller down one forty-eight regularly. I'm sure you've all seen them. Judy collects trash on the road for us, which we're all grateful for, you know, often. People do these things more frequently than ever before on a road. I mean, I see people walking their dogs, and it doesn't seem to slow anyone down, unfortunately. The motorists don't seem to take heed to this. I'm grateful for the police because we requested that they patrol our road more, and they've done it. They really have. That made a difference, and it makes a difference. But, you know, once they move on, people have very short attention span, and they start to speed again. So it does make a difference when you guys are there, and we're really appreciative of that. That said, once you pass South Road, North Brookfield Road goes into a series of S-curves as you head into New Braintree as well. That's just past our houses. There's been a lot of accidents there. Most recently in June, somebody speeding took out a telephone pole, and the road was closed for, I think, seven hours. That's not an isolated event or something that's happened once or twice. It's happened several times that people have been flying into those S-curves all the way to the New Braintree line. My driveway specifically is a blind driveway. If I look north on North Brookfield, there's a little bump in the road. If somebody's coming under that dip before Lincoln, I really can't see them until they come over it. There's also a grassy knoll there. I have to essentially nudge my nose into the road just a tiny bit, not even past the white bike line. I get honked at just for doing that, just to pull out of my driveway, okay? Furthermore, it's a ninety-degree turn. When I return home, I can't take that turn at forty. I can't take it at thirty-five. I can't take it at thirty. It's not safe. I have to slow down to twenty-five or twenty. I cannot tell you. It's fifty percent of the time or greater. I am either tailgated, honked at, flipped off, passed and accelerated around, or all of those things at once. I shouldn't be harassed pulling into my driveway. It's just infuriating to me. Other than that, the reality is that, you know, it's a very difficult road to be on when people are going forty, but they're not going forty. They're going fifty. They're going sixty. I mean, it's crazy. They're just going too fast for the road. So we know in a perfect world, people go to the speed limit. Everybody's gonna go a little bit faster than the speed limit. They're going way faster than forty. And, you know, as much as they patrol and it slows people down, I think people are still gonna think it's okay to go fifty there. It's just simply not. So with that, you know, that's my experience. I'm gonna pass it over to the other residents to say some of their experiences, because I know they've had some recent ones as well.
Okay, thank you so much. Aaron?
I'm Blanchard, sixteen thirty-one North Brookfield Road, across from Pete. Same things happen to me, slowing in, pulling out. Yesterday, I was slowing down. I was down by Ford. There's Ford, then there's a house, then there's me. I'm slowing down, and a motorcycle, double-syllowed line, motorcycle went around me, passed me, and I went like this, saying, "Double-syllowed line", and he flipped me off. I've gotten flipped off so many times. I've gotten almost hit so many times. Like he says, you can't see. I have a hard time seeing if I go on one side of my driveway, I slow down to get in the other side of my driveway, and I'm gonna get rear-ended. They just go way too fast.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the area?
Peter Smith, sixteen forty-nine North Brookfield Road. You know, he pretty much said it all, Karen too, same things happen to me. You know, our driveways are all just very blind, and, you know, we can't see either way, you know, very well. And when we pull out, you know, we can't like just shoot out quickly, you know, so we take our time to get out, and then, you know, people fly up on our butts so quick, you know, and you know, it's like when we return home, you know, we gotta slow down a lot, and, you know, just to get to a proper speed, a safe speed to pull into our driveways. Like Karen said, you know, people try to pass us. People honk at us, yell at us, and, you know, I think that's unacceptable. And as well as, you know, I bring my son out to the bus every morning now at six-thirty. And this morning I was out there, and just the speed of these vehicles flying by, where I'm at my driveway with my son, Lincoln Road's got about five or so kids. And then there's a child that has to walk from Lincoln Road down to South Road now to get the bus to Pathfinder. And these, they're not even getting out of the way, you know, they're just staying in the lane, just passing these kids. And, you know, I'm out there, an adult, and, you know, with me being there, they don't seem to care at all, you know, and it's just, you know, you know, again, it's like straightaway, and people feel they can go a little faster there, but it's just, you know, I think it's, whatever we could do to maybe slow it down a little bit would be great, you know, I mean, it's, you know, the kids are at that age where they're all riding their bikes up and down one forty-eight going to Lake Pean, and it's like, I am so, I tell my son no, because I don't feel that it's safe, you know, I mean, you know, it's different from when I was growing up, you know, now there's people on cell phones, and it's like, but I don't wanna, I want them to live too, you know, so I mean, it's, yeah, it's just, you know, it's pretty crazy down there, just, you know, it's forty, but like Pete said, it's like they're going fifty, fifty-five, and, you know, people passing, I mean, you know, last summer, there was a gang of streetbikes that would come up South Road, and a couple of times I saw the police chase them, like, you know, it's, I've seen vehicles too, and it's just, I don't know. That's just my take. It's just, you know, I've seen a lot of things, and it's just kind of, it's, I feel it's pretty dangerous down there, you know?
It is dangerous.
Too, like the trucks going by and the jake brakes, and it's pretty wild, so I should.
It is a dangerous area. I have to agree with you. I've gone over it several times, watching specifically how I handle going down that hill, getting to your area. And, you know, a couple of times I've been a little over the forty because I feel like I'm just sailing off that hill. So I can understand your trepidation down there.
Yeah, my parents, they're, they're getting pretty old now too, and they still drive, but I mean, I mean, they pull out of my driveway a lot slower than I do. I direct them out, and I'm like, wait, I'll get you guys out safely, you know, so.
Right.
It's important to know that there are thirty-five houses from Lincoln Road to the New Braintree line. That's point seven miles, thirty-five houses. So it may look like there's a few houses there, but it's actually legally, it should be a thickly settled area. And the houses by average are less than two hundred feet apart. They're about a hundred twenty. So it looks like it because it's wooded, and the driveways are long, and you don't see all the houses. But there are thirty-five houses in less than a mile right there.
That's good to know. I've never counted how many houses there were, but that's a good number.
Yeah, I checked it out on Google and re-corroborated a few times to make sure, but it's thirty-five houses off North Brookfield to the New Braintree line from Lincoln.
Right, where's it, drops to thirty at the cemetery, going, going this way?
Yeah. So the speed limit from Rutland Road, basically from where Rutland Road starts, down through the lake is thirty-five. It ends at the cemetery.
Right, and then it picks up.
Just before Dean's, and then it goes to forty, and it's forty all the way up to South Road until you get to, just past South Road, and then drop back down to thirty-five through the S-turns.
What's, what's the demographic of the people you've been stopping? Are they from Ocam or they?
A lot of them are from out of town.
From out of town, traveling.
So, yeah, so people are coming from North Brookfield and points beyond to go to work in Worcester, using that as a gateway to one-twenty-two.
Yeah.
That particularly scares me, especially at six-thirty in the morning for the children that are out on the road.
Every single time I'm out there, there's at least one or two vehicles that just.
And it's getting darker in the morning now, so it's not gonna be still seen.
It's time the buses come at six-thirty.
Right, no, I understand that for sure.
I do feel that when you talk about what, what the chief just said, you know, if you kept that thirty-five all the way through, and obviously it's your folks' decision, but I think there's a big mental difference of how fast people will go when the speed limit's under forty. When it's forty, they'll go fifty, you know?
I'm sure.
Fifty-five. When it's thirty-five, they're a little more hesitant, because they know fifty is gonna be a big financial burden if they get pulled over.
Right.
So I think it would make a big difference if we could keep it thirty-five the whole way through town. That'd be really great.
How could we put it, thickly settled, or something?
Well, getting something listed as a thickly settled area takes some tests, if I'm not mistaken. They have to do road tests, they have to do numbers tests, have that wire across the road, see how many cars go over.
Actually comes out, and they do a, they do a study. And like she was saying, they, they put out a measuring device to measure how many vehicles go by, what's the rate of traffic. Sometimes they'll set up two, and they'll measure the time between, you know, the distance between the two posts, to see if they can gauge how fast people are actually going down there.
Those are little rubber wires.
Yeah, but it's not up to the town. That's a state highway.
Okay.
So it's not up to the town to determine what the speed limit is on that road. We'd have to petition Transportation to come out and actually do a road study and change that speed limit. In the short, we could probably, you know, change some patrol tactics and maybe get down there earlier in the day. Ever since COVID, people are driving like crazy. It's unbelievable. Officers were told, do not do motor vehicle stops, don't get, risk getting sick and all that stuff. And so with that big lapse in time that motor vehicle law wasn't really enforced, people got used to the idea of speeding around.
Yeah.
Now we're trying to catch up and re-educate them.
Yeah.
I did look at the studies that we do, and I ran the numbers, and since January first to July first, we made sixty-five motor vehicle stops on North Brookfield Road alone.
Yep.
And radar enforcement, we were out there thirty-two different times that we actually logged, but we don't log every enforcement. We do. Sometimes we'll go out there on a government highway safety grant money, and we'll sit there and we'll log it as that. Other times, for a regular patrol, we may drive up and down and run radar, moving radar, or stationary radar, and not always call it in or log it as stationary radar. You're just on patrol.
Yep.
So if you spend ten to fifteen minutes sitting at your favorite hunt, I think his is down by where you guys live.
Yeah.
He sits on the grass right at South Road.
And Judy.
Yeah, yeah, and it's a good spot.
We've been very appreciative of you guys being there. It has made huge difference.
Well, that's good to hear.
And, and we were really appreciative of it, but it, again, it's, it still happens.
Oh, yeah.
Frequently. It makes a difference, but it's never gonna stop, you know, just, I don't know, it's like, just gonna be that day that, you know, some kid gets hit.
And, and we're gonna be like, we had this meeting, we knew it was a problem.
If.
Speaking of people's attitudes, though, it's, it's hard to, like, you know, they're passing you by, they're flipping you off.
Yeah.
I mean, stuff like that, unfortunately, we have no control over that.
Right.
Certainly, if we don't see it, there's nothing we can do about it. But even, even if they were to do that to you, we, there's nothing to us.
Freedom of speech.
However, if they're speeding or they're driving erratically, then we can act upon that.
Yeah.
And we do. And just so you know, the guy that crashed into the pole and shut the road down for seven hours?
Yeah.
Speed wasn't affected.
Really?
Something worse.
What was it?
Distracted driver.
Oh, he said the cell phone.
No, it wasn't a cell phone. What he did was, and he admitted this to me at the accident scene, because it was a pretty good accident. He hit the pole and sheared it right off.
Took it off.
But he really wasn't going over the speed limit. He had turned off the South Road and turned up there and just drove right into the pole. And the lady behind him has a video camera on her dashboard and showed me the footage.
He just drove straight into it.
He just drove straight into the pole. So what he did was, he was working landscaping, and the truck was in front of him, and a truck pulled out onto the road, and he pulled out behind it, and reached over to get his Gatorade out of his lunch bag, and was totally looking down and drove right into the pole.
Wow.
Never even touched some rest.
Power out for about seven hours in my house.
I know, it did. We were out there quite a while.
Yeah.
That was a busy day for us.
Yeah. Well, we do appreciate everything you guys are doing for sure, and, and, you know, like I said, it makes a difference. And I would say that if people were regularly going forty, none of us would be here. Right. You know what I mean? It's not about people going forty or forty-five even. It's, it's when you see the car, then it's just a blur right by.
Oh, yeah.
You're like, what is going on?
Coming, you know, you can just.
Yeah, we've actually written a lot of fines down there in the last six months.
I was just gonna say, I've been reading like the law, about the Ocam law, and I seen like the other, Tammy gave it to me a couple of weeks, you know, a couple of weeks ago. It was all North Brookfield Road, North Brookfield Road.
We hammered them down here.
Yeah, but it's a written warning.
Well, some of them are people that tenth, ten miles an hour over the speed limit. I mean,
Yeah.
You know, it's an educational thing. It's not so much hitting them with the fines.
Right.
But if they're twelve to fifteen miles an hour over the speed limit, that's when you give them a fine.
Yeah.
Oh, give me a book.
We can put you out there with a hairdryer. That's slow them down. They think you're running.
Could we potentially, at some point, get the, the speed monitor that's up by the cemetery now down our way as well?
So I think we just moved that, and I think, so Sergeant Tucker is in charge of that, and he, I think he moved it up to Old Turnpike Road, but I could actually have him redeploy it, because on the contract with the Department of Transportation, we have to put that in certain locations. It has to sit there for a long period of time.
Gotcha.
We collect that data, and then we upload that data to the, the Biodeep Transportation, which is gonna help in your case.
Right.
So, yeah, I think we could probably redeploy it down there. I'll have a talk with him. We'll get, we'll see if we can get it down there in a couple of weeks.
That'd be awesome.
And New Braintree had theirs out for a while.
They did.
On their stretch in August.
Right.
And that caused a little bit of an issue.
Did it?
Because on their end, it's forty. So as soon as you enter Ocam, it's thirty-five, and it's posted thirty-five.
Yeah.
But people, people don't see, you know, again, the last thing they see is that small radar, uh, speed trailer.
Okay.
And it says forty. So, you know, and that, and because, because I, again, as Chief said, I mean, I spend a lot of time in that area, because it, again, little bit of a pet peeve of mine. And so a lot of people I was stopping, they saw, I thought it was forty. The, the speed limit sign back there said forty. I said, well, that's in New Braintree. And I always educate people. I'd say, well, if you enter Ocam, it's thirty-five, and it is posted.
And you're heading into a blind four-way intersection.
You sure are.
Correct.
And then two S-curves.
Correct. With a lot of houses in between. Yeah. So, you know.
The strangest thing I had happen down there, you talk about people's driving attitudes. Somebody was driving into Ocam, and just before your house, there was, there was a motorcycle, and there was a string of cars. It was about four cars, and the motorcycle was in the back. And a person in the front was taking a left either up Saf's, Safarovich driveway, or the driveway before that. I don't remember which. But the bike was impatient, so it ran around all the cars, and the guy turned, and he peed on the car, turning into the driveway.
Yeah, that would almost happen to me. If I, if he was like, if he was passing, he, he passed me. If I didn't see him.
Yeah.
Boom.
Yep, then that's exactly right. If they're passing you on that side, they're gonna hit you if you turn.
And I mean, I know it would be their fault, but, you know, it's gonna wreck my truck.
Or worse.
I guarantee it'll wreck their day.
We'll, we'll, we'll see if we can get the, the radar, the speed trailer that is down by the cemetery, get that moved to the thirty-five.
Did Kevin not move that yet?
No, I don't, I don't know where he's at with that study.
It was by the cemetery.
Right.
So he just called me the other day and asked me where I wanted it deployed, and I told him, I'll leave that totally up to you. And he was talking about Old Turnpike Road. So if he hasn't moved it yet, I'll just tell him, move it down to the thirty-five in your area.
We'll try to find a good spot in that area where it's.
So right in the area, Lincoln Road, I would, I would say would be good. Maybe right there.
Yeah.
Right, is there any way to set up early and still be at the school at the same time?
So, yeah, I suppose there is. It just means getting.
Like seven-thirty, seven o'clock?
Well, if he's saying six-thirty, the bus is there, you wanna.
Well, because everybody going to work is, so after eight, eight-thirty, I think most of the heavy traffic is already on, it's beat a Worcester or wherever they go.
There's a lot of traffic going by like five-thirty.
It's rush hour.
Really early.
Start my day early, and he can start his day early, and we can move the hours back.
I mean, just mix it up a little bit.
Yeah.
I know you still have to do the schools, you know, when they're dropping off.
Yeah, I don't have to be there till about eight, twelve.
You know, even if you're there for five minutes at an earlier, you know, they're gonna see you, and then it's gonna affect the thing.
Right, yeah. Thinking.
Not that you'd have time.
Nation we used to have.
Not that you'd have time to maybe pull somebody over, but.
Everybody, everybody was afraid to drive through town, but that was twenty years ago.
Yeah. Okay, I'm Judy Manad, and my house is seventeen thirty-one. We're at the corner of South and, and North Brookfield. We're welcome to put it in that little restway, you know, if you want. The other thing is, since the pandemic, I think everybody will agree that there's an increase in the number of those little nip things. They're all over the place. And if Karen Jolene was here, who collects a lot of trash, I think she would probably tell about all of those things here. So, you know, I think there's a multiple factors that, you know.
That's at night on the way home.
Yeah, it is, you know, and really, my window's there, and you can hear it at night. It's, South Road is pretty rugged, you know, going up and down. It's all night, you know, so it's a difficult thing. And our mailboxes are right on the road, so that's kind of significant too, you know, when you're trying to get your mail, and they go by, they come by kind of fast. That's it.
Are there any places where the mailbox is across the street, and you have to go across the street down there at all?
Yeah, so I mean, that's an adventure.
I, I would ask the post office to change it to, back to your side somehow.
They don't have any on.
They don't have anything on that side at all, that area? Oh, okay.
Even getting your mail, you know.
Oh, I understand that, because I do. I see people going out for mail, and I don't know how they can do it.
That's what.
And do it safely.
That's what's frustrating. It's like they see you at the mailbox, and they don't even move over. It's like, they can move over, there's no one coming on the other way.
Yeah.
Just fly by you like, it's just like, I have to live here, man.
Are there any traffic studies on file at the station from way back?
I don't have any.
I don't think.
I, I know a long, long time ago, this reason was fifty.
It was.
Down near Matt Erosion.
As I understand.
So when I started on the police department in ninety-two, I think it was ninety, or somehow in ninety-three, the chief and I were working with the Department of Transportation to set up the road studies all over town, and we did a whole bunch of them.
I remember.
According to Sergeant Albano, who called the Department of Transportation recently, because of Hunt Road, he says they don't even have those records anymore.
Well, I mean, it's long.
You're talking thirty-one years ago, thirty-two years ago.
Yeah, my in-laws live at eighteen, it's thirty-two. They've lived there since seventy-six, in the speed limit used to be, and they've gotten into two car accidents pulling out of their driveway. They, it means they'll live until they die, but yeah, it's always been like that.
So what I'm gonna, what I'm gonna propose is, that's, that radar sign that we have records data. And so I think what we'll do is I'll call the Department of Transportation and say, hey, listen, since that sign is recording data, if we put it down here, can we, you know, upload that information to you and make a determination as to whether or not we can lower the speed limit in that area? The worst I can say is no.
No. Okay. Is there a way we could put up other signage down near that area just to give people a warning?
We can't, yeah, we can't put any signs up. That's state highway.
Couldn't we request like a blind driveways?
That's what I was thinking, blind driveway, children in road, school bus area, anything like that that would get people's attention? Or can you put down something like fines are doubled in this area if you don't?
Make it a permanent work zone.
Yeah.
It's a work zone the whole time, sure.
I don't see why not.
Put up the children a play sign. So that has nothing to do with.
Yeah.
The road.
Yeah, and all of our driveways are frankly blind as soon as you pass Lincoln all the way down. I mean, they're all blind driveways.
Children out getting a school bus on state property should be better protected by the state.
Yeah, I would think so, but Don, Don's gonna say so.
Who closed that road?
Who closed the road? We do.
It's a state road.
The state. We can put the signs up.
Yeah.
We can?
The Board of Selectmen can put the signs up. It's our road.
I try to.
Well, like I said, we can put, we can put signs up, but I don't think we can change the posted speed limit without a study.
No, I just looked that up. There's a whole procedure that you gotta go through here.
I'm sure.
It has to come from us, a letter to D O T, and then they're gonna send you a whole list of things that need to be done.
Okay, sounds good to me.
Sounds fine to me. I think that's the least we can do.
Thank you all. We really appreciate you helping out in this matter.
Question.
Yeah, we'll see if we can get out earlier too, and just.
Do one for.
Tickets and.
Yeah. They're identical. They're just on different sides of town.
Yeah, we got. Same thing as Karen, the horse.
Have a number on it.
No, but it's a good road.
Yeah, they.
And it's dangerous, like that, that dip.
Any road in town, we have to petition D O T, even if it's not a state road.
Forty-five.
Okay.
Sometimes forty-seven. Rarely do I get somebody.
For Turnpike, we're still gonna do the same letter.
They also do the same letter together.
That's what I was.
Why do two at different times or whatever?
Coming along, most of you guys are there. Every car I pass flashes me.
Oh, listen.
Because that's part of the job.
Okay. I have one person that has a statement.
Yeah, Paul Roche from Japanese Road. There's no shame in calling up Brookfield Barracks and asking the state police if they would, you know, make a few extra runs out on one forty-eight, especially when he's complaining about heavy truck traffic. I mean, I'm sure they'd be more willing to come and set up once and twice. And I think, I think a state police cruiser is much more of a deterrent than the local town cruiser.
Go to jail just as fast.
Offering a suggestion.
I actually saw a trooper set up about ten days ago on the New, New Braintree section.
I've, I've seen him set up in North Brookfield and sixty-seven.
I've seen them on Old Turnpike as well. Not very often, but I have seen them on Old Turnpike too.
Yeah, you can't run radar on Old Turnpike in the morning, because every car you stop, you get three troopers stop behind you.
But they're out there.
It's crazy.
Yeah, they're out there, so that's a good thing.
Like Robinson Road.
Okay.
With the state police? That was Kevin.
We can try contacting D O T, see what we can get from them to work on for Route one forty-eight especially, and throw North, uh, Old Turnpike in with it. That'll be fine if we. Especially and throw Northbrook, uh, Old Turnpike in with it, that'll be fine if we can do the testing to make it. A limited speed area of thirty-five, that would be very good.
Well, Don was just saying that the select board can, and I think he has a whole list of stuff that he's gonna send me, so we'll figure it out.
But it would be up to the police department to actually do the contacts.
Bikes, they come down, then they come on North Brookfield and boom, they're gone.
Not allowed to chase them.
Yeah, we can't chase bikes.
Yeah, no, I know you can't. We still could put up, you know, children in the area, blind driveways, I think we should be able to do that even on one forty-eight. So we'll look into that and get, see if we can't get some signs.
Thank you very much.
That'll get a start on doing DOT part of it.
Yeah, they got ninety days till it's over the night.
Thickly settled.
That has to come from you guys?
The letter comes from us to them, to DOT. Then they're gonna say, yeah, we'll look at it or not look at it, then they're gonna give you a list of things they want done.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
And we had the sign, so I think.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
I can give you the, the, so the mass general law, if it is thickly settled, would be basically it says. Um, a thickly settled or business district and territory contiguous, contiguous in any way which is built up with structures devoted to business, not us. Or the territory contiguous to any dwelling where houses are situated such distances as will average less than two hundred feet between them for a distance of a quarter mile or more. So, a quarter mile or more, it, one house could be three hundred, the other could be fifty, right? As long as the average is under two hundred, then that would denote a thickly settled, that's, that's the, from mass general law.
No. They were all.
I'm not sure if that would apply, but.
That's the one portion of the area.
Okay, only if it's on.
Your road has postings that are set by the DOT.
Got it.
So we wanna change those postings, that's what you wanna do. That's the procedure he's gonna go through.
Awesome.
That's, that's the way to go.
Awesome.
You might have a hard argument too with, uh, DOT on thickly settled because we have a three-acre minimum three hundred feet of frontage. So they're gonna do the math quickly and say it doesn't fall within the.
Yeah, ours are grandfather, like I'm only.
That's what I'm saying, most of those houses are grandfather again.
Yeah, I barely have.
I think so.
Round to myself.
Okay.
Yeah, so, uh, I'm six point six one, he's only two, two, I don't know, a bunch of them are a lot smaller.
Cause I bought, I, we bought ours, uh, the property in seventy-eight.
I remember.
Yeah. And, uh, we didn't build till eighty-eight, you know, oh, but while the only house was there was his.
Yeah, mine was forty-eight, nineteen forty-eight.
Quite a bit.
It has.
Sounds okay, well, we have some kind of a system to go forward and hopefully it will work for you, or we can get you some relief anyway. Just depends whether the drivers will listen, see, or get fined.
I'd be more than happy to find them.
We appreciate everybody's effort here, yeah, I can appreciate it, thanks.
If you wanna find them, that's fine, as much as you want, that's okay too.
Fred, is there anything you can do with, with North Brookfield, the chief, about maybe? On his end?
I certainly could talk to him and I, I.
You know what I mean?
Yeah. See if they'll set up down there?
Well, I'll work it as a kind of a joint.
Right.
But that way it would let them know it's not just, it's the whole road, you know?
Right. Oh, it's definitely, they're experiencing that down the other end too, no doubt about it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no.
I think.
Oh, yeah.
I never see cars speeding at that end, only.
Well, you get that long straightaway that comes from, uh, Brooks Pond Road.
Right.
Yeah, but you're thirty miles an hour down there.
Yeah, but they're still flying.
Yeah.
My road's a little beat up too, so.
It is.
Yeah.
Harold, you got that?
Just made a face.
Anything further for the discussion? Everybody's all set, we are going to move forward. And hopefully get you some relief, thank you so much for bringing our attention. Next, Council on Aging Updates, please.
Um, I have, uh, a resignation from Melanie Silver, our Activities Coordinator. Ocam, Council on Aging and Board of Selectmen, I will be stepping down from my role as Activities Coordinator effective August eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. A lot of thought have, has gone into this and it's not been an easy decision to make, in fact, it was quite difficult. It has been an honor working with and serving the seniors of Ocam. It is a wonderful community that you have, I have been blessed to work with and be supported by Barbara Ruszinski, Paul and Diane Rochette, Rick and Claire Hendra, Judy Menard, Priscilla and Becky Aston. These credible people have a huge heart for the seniors of Ocam and have their best interest in the forefront. They have gone to bat for me for which no amount of words can convey my gratitude, they are a great team. Thank you to the seniors of Ocam for being warm, welcoming, awesome human beings. You have so much to offer and impart, you are fun, you are wise, you are welcoming, and I am so much better for my time with you. Sincerely, Melanie Silver.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything else from the Council on Aging?
At this moment.
Just that?
Well, we are planning an opening day. We have done a great deal of advertising, we have done a great deal of, made a great deal of effort to, um, try to draw people's awareness to the senior center. Harold, or you guys were nice enough to put the sign out on one forty-eight and one twenty-two. Uh, what we have seen, we, we are at this point not able to make good decisions until we see what happens at the opening day. Our Council on Aging meeting follows that activity, and we will try to judge then. At this point, uh, for those of us who have been here, uh, it's an untenable situation. We can't continue, um, Ocam is unique because it is not a one-building senior center. Some of us are traveling to North Brookfield, now Rutland, New Braintree. Almost every other day of the week. Uh, we are volunteers, and I personally, I can't continue that kind of, uh, work ethic.
I, I think just the.
Name, name, please.
Yeah, pardon?
Your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Claire Hendra on Lincoln Road. Just to kind of put it in perspective, when Melanie wanted to take the leave of absence, we all decided that we'd try to pitch in and cover while she was gone, anticipating that she would come back, and, um, so all of us took on certain responsibilities. And so we have some challenges in front of us. So one of them is, is that in order for us to continue without having a person who is hired and whose job it is to be here, we're all giving up personal lives to be here. And some of us have given up a lot more their personal lives than others of us, and I think Barbara and, has, has borne the burden. You know, so it makes it very hard because it means you, there's a lot of things you can't do, and at our age, you know, it's getting smaller and you wanna get more in, so it's even more critical. Uh, the other thing too is that we expected a drop-off of people in the summertime, that's why we didn't mind so much about the leave of absence. And we figured we could fill in, and we have seen a drop-off, but we don't ever see a lot of numbers of people use from the senior center. So a lot of us, in a very unscientific way, have noticed the same people come all the time, but we can't get anybody new. So that's the second challenge that we're facing, and then the third challenge is that the space that we have is not conducive to the new style of senior center, you know, people don't come up here to sit and shoot the breeze and drink coffee, or they wanna do things. And we don't have enough space, so what we've had to do is go to other towns and ask them, can we use your space? Which was, yeah, which was good for Melanie because she could go out and ask the other town, so we use New Braintree Town Center. Uh, we were, uh, no longer use North Brookfield Congregational Church for Zumba because they had other requirements for it. So Melanie was able to negotiate space for us at the Rutland Senior Center, but we're always kind of grubbing around to get space. And then if the town needs their space, then unfortunately you have to be searching again. So this new style of senior center where people want to do things, we don't really have enough space. So this is all beginning to add up as factors that we have to look at.
And to support you, Claire. Okay, the functional fitness that we run in New Braintree last week had eighteen people, that's the most we've seen. This morning, and to second, and our lunch bunch, we have had as many as twenty or more for lunch bunch. Those are all away from this building, they don't come to gather here. The other thing about that, I just lost my train of thought, but there was something like. Uh, Zuber, uh, this morning we had four, no, thank you. And what happens every time we have to change the venue in order to do an activity, we lose people. Because many of the people have their own routines set up, so we move it from Wednesday to Monday, oh, sorry, that's my day two, whatever on Monday.
Yeah.
So we constantly are shifting and moving and losing people just by having to shift and move.
So we decided the last COA meeting, that what we were gonna do is we were gonna do a big, a big push.
Right.
Because the big question was, can we or can we not bring people into the senior center? So that's why you see the big push, we're gonna have an ad in the Berry, is that coming up? Uh, yeah, tomorrow, September fifth. Um, that's why we appreciate people move the sign down to one twenty-two and one forty-eight, so we could make sure people know that we're gonna have this open house.
The date is?
September thirteen, Friday the thirteenth. So on Friday thirteenth, we're gonna have an open house, and that's what the ad is about to try to, try to bring people in. Uh, and then we will be assessing what the situation is. And depending upon the situation that we conclude, we may be coming to you about uh, what we would propose to do with the senior center in the future. Yeah. Yeah, of course, your input at that time would be welcome as well, but, you know, so we're trying to put together as, as much as we can to draw people in, and I'm putting together some stats as well, I'm running the stats out of my senior center, how much participation we've had in the past year, uh, the participation includes not only Ocam, but people from other towns that have come to our programs as well, so it's a little bit, it's not just, uh, Ocam people.
So do you not want us to advertise the coordinator position until this?
I am really.
I'm torn.
Um, we're torn, we're torn, we're torn, I think it would be better for us to get that information coming in, and rather than come to you at that time about the coordinator, uh, position, rather than wasting your time. So you can just give us a little time to try to figure it out and talk over the facts with you, so you can get some, have some input. Uh, the other thing too was we found today, cause we're going to meetings now with the MCOA, and I'm gonna sign us up even though our future is a little uncertain, for the info hub, and you can advertise the position there too.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, and it goes out across the state, okay? Yeah, and it's free, you know, so that's always good.
That's good.
And it has wide distribution, so if you could just bear with us, cause we may have some suggestions, we might look for a hybrid model. We may look for a blend with another town, it's, there's a couple of things we've just gotta check out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there any possibility, once camping season is over, that they could use Pine Acres again?
Pine Acres has offered us cornhole and, um, hillbowl again.
Okay.
Uh, we can, and this, I, I still have to check into this, they have offered us the lodge starting in January for Zumba. However, with what I just said, if we are secure in Rutland right now with Zumba.
Yeah, you don't wanna move again.
If we wanna move in January, we're gonna lose people again, and they will not continue us after the camping season starts. So, cause I offered, and they are, uh, bringing it to, uh, Randy and Denise. I offered that perhaps we could pay for the instructor at the lodge and allow the campers to come in and take the class.
I know they said not for this year, but possibly next.
Uh, that's still to be decided, and what was said was that campers are usually there Friday through Monday. They would prefer us to be there Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday. So, probably not.
Okay.
I mean, our people are probably not going to participate on weekends, sort of thing, they want.
Probably not.
During the week.
Yeah.
And have their family time.
And we're noticing there's a big shift, uh, exercise is very popular. They want the space, yeah, they want the space for exercise, uh, also popular.
Anything with food.
Oh, of course. Yeah. You know, and I think also if there are other, uh, activities, they could kind of spread out, maybe painting or something of that nature, but.
But, but we can't even offer those things in the space we have.
Yeah, that's what it comes down to.
When painting is offered, people have a place to leave their product and work on it at another time. We have one room.
Yeah.
And there's no place to store anything that somebody's working on. So that's one thing, just to do yoga here, it means moving all the furniture out of that room in order to accommodate it.
And it was cheek to jowl, cheek to jowl.
Right.
Honestly.
It, it, it gets old to constantly be moving things.
Yeah.
Oh, and while we're on it, if, if, um, the, I realize the Board of Selectmen has, um, the power to grant the use of this building, I've been here before to ask about building use. In the event that you grant usage of our senior center, it would be really a courtesy if you could give us a heads up. Some of us have brought in AV equipment, we have laptops with, uh, remote controls, we, all of that would have to be secured if there were other people downstairs in the building, and it would be nice to have a heads up to know that.
Yeah, just let us know because that way we'll take the stuff home, right?
Yeah. Some of it, some of it is personal equipment that we're loaning to the senior center to do our programs.
Yeah. And we'll lock it up.
Yeah.
I guess that's it.
Okay, well, here's hoping that you get a good crowd on the thirteenth.
I hope so, yeah, they're hoping too.
How are you doing for the flu clinic?
Uh, we just did something new today.
We sent out a mass message.
We sent out a mass message, and I have, I think sixteen replies already.
So far sixteen, okay, I think you could do it.
Leicester Coalition has come to just do a feasibility, should they come to do it, and it would be flu, COVID and RSV. They have no particulars about it, um, they don't know how much it would be, whether it would come from CVS, where, what. They just wanna know how many people, because we had difficulty last year getting twenty-five people to do it. I've already called New Braintree, um, to see if their Council on Aging and Board of Health would reach out to, uh, New Braintree participants as well. But this, um, email this morning worked very well.
And I'm gonna experiment with the broadcast messaging at the senior center.
Cause I thought it would be a popular program that you should be able to get the twenty-five.
Yeah, you know, it, it, when, when I listened to, um, Barbara talking in the other room, cause I was working in the office, I'm like.
CVS wants forty-five people.
Yeah.
Really?
They gotta come.
Yeah. And if we do it as volunteers.
And we don't know cost, and it means we don't have staff to, to facilitate all of this either.
No, no, you don't.
That's a big sigh right there, you know? Yeah.
What would the cost be per person, or?
We don't know.
Not yet, we're just.
It's just feasibility, it's their interest.
Right, right.
That's all we know.
I just remember when the VNA used to do it, there was no cost, if you had your.
VNA is no longer.
No, I know, unfortunately.
I don't think it's the same urgency as there has been, when it was during the COVID, there was a great deal of urgency.
Right.
And the urgency is not like this.
We used to do it just for the regular flu because there was no COVID at that time, and it didn't cost, they just came. And if you had your Medicare card or whatever, and you could prove you were sixty-five or you were a senior, you were able to participate, yeah. Well, hopefully we can get something going again like that too.
It was a favorable response, and that was only went up this afternoon, so.
It went out in the noon time. To hear that.
How big is the interior of the old schoolhouse?
The old schoolhouse?
Is it more room than downstairs? Oh.
No, I don't think so.
You know, turnpike? I don't think.
I, I don't think so. I think it's pretty small.
It is.
Yeah, I think it is small.
That's something we should be talking about because the building is sitting there. We're insuring it. We're not doing anything with it.
That's because they don't have enough money yet.
Does the town own it?
And it probably is no heat.
Town meeting. Put some money out stabilization, fix it.
Um, one other thought, I chatted today with somebody from Hardwick. And, um, I have never personally investigated if there are, um, empty rooms that could be used at our school. Hardwick was able to do, uh, voting in their school. I thought that was no longer. I thought everyone had to be quarried on school property or to go into the school. Hardwick was able to get a building usage to allow voting because it could be manipulated so that we were nowhere near children if we had a separate entrance and a large enough space. I've always been told, oh, you can't do that. You can't do that. I've never checked into it personally. I've always been told, oh, everybody has to be quarried. You're going to have a drop-in situation. So, no. But I think at this point, and I don't know that we as Council on Aging have the, uh, ability to make a decision like that.
I don't know if it'd be right for us to do it.
Exactly.
Exactly. You know, asking the use of the school for something like.
Thank you, I like your points, yeah. Um, but it would be worth checking with the school district to see if that could be a possibility. Because there are sections that would be bigger than what we have downstairs.
Any of those classrooms would be.
Yes.
Yeah. And I think it would carry more weight if it came from.
Right. And some of those rooms have sinks and availability that we don't have.
Hmm.
So. If that could be done that much, it's, it's a, a thought that again, came up today, um, with someone from Hardware.
The worst they can say is.
No, right.
I wanted to check on how the classrooms are situated down there. There might be a way that they could coordinate off. So that you're not.
Think you need a separate entrance.
Yeah.
I think, that's my understanding, is you may need a separate entrance so that visitors are not passing by children.
There is a separate entrance in the back, but there's classrooms along that hallway that there are, yes, because my kid is in that class.
I didn't know which ones.
Um, and that's the entrance that they, there's two separate entrances, but those are the entrances that they use to go out to recess as well.
Yeah.
There are some classrooms with exit doors that face outside.
Mm-hmm.
One right on the corner in the back.
And it could be over by where the dumpsters.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that would potentially lead you right into the gymnasium.
Yeah. It's just that we are so limited by the space that we have.
Yeah.
Right. There are so many things we can't offer.
Yeah.
Right.
I know that the school does get used.
I know, and they.
But in the evening.
Right.
Which is yours.
Which is difficult for seniors, I'm sure.
This was all day. That's why I brought it up.
Yeah.
Is that it wasn't a daytime voting situation.
What about in, granted, it's not in O-CAM, but what about the New Braintree School?
Well, again.
Have that, right. And.
I understand, but again, is it correct for the Council on Aging to say, oh, by the way, we're O-CAM, but we want to use your New Braintree School.
Today at Georgia.
Oh, I'm sure that's going to be.
It's gonna, yeah.
I think it needs to come from someone else's.
The day at Harvard, it's, it's going to come up. We're going to have to be really careful.
Yep.
I'd like to go down to the school and just do a site visit of those back rooms that maybe we could get something going. And, and see if they approve.
That would be fine. That would be good.
You know, and then see if they can, if they can accommodate it.
Yoga.
Yeah, right.
We could get yoga going again, you know?
If we could get at least two good sized rooms down there or something.
Would be great.
You could at least do two things at a time then.
Yeah.
Just one.
Having that to insane, we do.
No, I know you can't.
Coordinator.
Yeah.
Because then we could do painting, we could do yoga, we could do.
Yeah. We used to do, be able to do more when we had this room.
Yeah.
Set up for us to work in it.
Yeah.
But even this room today with the, the population that we get for the exercise classes. It would be partially small.
Right, you said, you had eighteen in the functional fitness?
Right, yeah. And that's in the large New Braintree community center. And we fill half that room. If, at least half that.
Yeah, that's right, we do, yeah.
Good, good. How much usually comes for, uh, Zumba?
It, again, that's the one that's had to move, so we lose and we gain, and we lose and we gain. This morning, we had four of us and two from Rutland, but today was the first day.
Okay. You have before that, that, what did you have before the congregational charge?
Uh, we could have up to, uh, fourteen. And that space was too small for the fourteen.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, it's so active to do Zumba, you don't, you can't stand still. You have to move back and forth and you can't get by people. Yeah. Okay, let's, um, I'll volunteer and if anybody else wants to do, I'll go down to the school and see if there's something we can do down there.
That would be wonderful.
And see if we can't get something down there. I'll, I'll talk with the, um, the principal down there and see what's up. Okay, we can, well, at least we can move forward on something, see how it goes on the thirteenth.
Yep, and then we'll be back to you.
And see if we got anything going. Okay?
Yeah.
Very good. Anything else before we move on? Nope, everybody's all set on that one? Very good, thank you. Uh, road sign for Ware Corner Road and Rutland Road. Police Department, please.
So there's been some discussion about the, uh, yield on Ware Corner Road, uh, Rutland Road. And I know I talked to Mike about it and I've talked to Harold about it. And, uh, I think the consensus is that we need a sign on the right hand side that basically tells people they need to yield to oncoming traffic. So they're not shooting across Ware Corner Road onto Rutland Road with, you know, basically cutting somebody off that's already on Ware Corner Road. So if you're coming up towards the center of town and you're coming down,
Hmm.
they're going to cut in front of that vehicle because they feel as though that the yield applies to them. And we've had a lot of near misses there. I'm sure everybody knows.
Yeah.
Um, basically with the, the way that road is set up, as you're coming up the hill, you should be merging
Yeah.
with oncoming traffic and not yielding, and they shouldn't be yielding to you. It should be the other way around. They should be merging in and yielding to the traffic on the left because they're leaving Rutland Road and going onto Ware Corner Road. So what we've come up with is a sign that goes on the right-hand side of the road that says yield to oncoming traffic.
Going down the hill.
Going down the hill.
On the ball field side.
Correct. And on Rutland Road, we would put a sign that says yield ahead. And then actually have the yield sign so that they're yielding to oncoming traffic from Ware Corner Road.
I would like that, Fred, because I don't trust anybody when I'm coming up Rutland Road.
It doesn't mean they gotta follow the signs though.
Uh, yeah, but I know. Ware Corner Road, I'm just about coming the other way. I don't trust that.
No. If we decide to make this change, what I'd like.
Figure it out.
Have the sign that we use for advertisements and stuff like that, put that down in the ball field and announce the change. Put it on Facebook, put it on our website. Let everybody know that this change is going to occur.
Good.
So that people aren't just willy-nilly driving up the road thinking that the old rules apply and getting in a head-on collision. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and the big thing will be get rid of that curved.
Right.
Yellow line, which.
Right, that's going to happen.
People thinking that that's, that's the road. And when, in reality, you're joining Rutland Road and you're on Ware Corner Road and people aren't signaling, you know, to turn left, and they're cutting right in front of people who have the right of way coming up the hill on Ware Corner.
Right. So if we do, if we do this, if it's acceptable, when we do this, we'd scrub that line and paint the line straight down the road. Negating the fact that you can turn left there. So people coming down the road would know they have to cross a solid yellow line to get onto Rutland Road.
Okay.
Which at a minimum, hopefully would force them to use their turn signal.
Yeah, well, now you're asking for miracles.
Oh, no, but sometimes you gotta, you gotta lead in the water and then hope they drink. But there's been quite a few near misses there, so.
I know they have. So I, I pulled them over, not yielding the other way.
Right.
I mean, I come up the hill and they didn't yield to me. I had a lady do it, cut me right off. I'm coming up Rutland Road, she cut me right off. I lit her up, pulled her over.
Yeah.
She had no idea.
Not here.
Yeah.
No idea.
Yeah.
Very confusing.
It is. I think this would straighten it out a little bit because the law basically is, it's pretty simple. You're merging onto another road. So you're coming off a road that's named Rutland Road and merging onto Ware Corner Road.
Yeah.
And I think the merger is what needs to be addressed.
Yeah.
People need to understand that that's a merger and not a yield, even though they have to yield.
Yeah.
For the oncoming traffic.
I mean, I explained the history.
Yeah.
How that became about was there was no front-wheel drive.
Right.
Nobody, very few people had.
Make it up the hill, yeah.
And they felt that if you could keep going on Rutland on that inside curve, where on the Ware Corner side, you, if you lost your momentum, you could back up into that little cross.
Yep.
You know, and make another run at it because the road was wider.
Right.
Um, that was kind of the gist of it, I think, back in nineteen seventy-three, but they tried a stop sign.
Stop sign wouldn't work because then.
No, and that's why it's, that's why it's not there. But they did try that first, you know?
Right, Berry Road, going down Berry Road, you make the left onto Adams Road. There's a sign right there. Right. Yield to the. So we put that sign up. This was the same discussion at a meeting, I think. We put that sign up, and I recommended that sign, and I said, we need to get that sign up there. And then there was a lot of discussion about it. And then finally, the sign went up. It, it does work to some degree. I mean, people still do what they're going to do.
That's people cutting.
They cut off.
One of the people on Berry Road to go to Adams.
Correct, yeah. And this is really no, no different. It's basically the same thing. They're cutting people off. And you're on the right side of the road, but coming up, but when you're coming down, you're clearly going to be cutting off anybody on Ware Corner Road. That's out there.
I would think it'd be easier coming up Rutland, like you say.
A yield.
Cause you're, you're on the left side of the car.
Right.
To see to the left, where if you're coming up Ware Corner, you're on the left side looking across the right side, you know, over to.
Well, it's amazing how many people drive oblivious.
Wow, that's another issue that.
It is.
We're not going to fix tonight.
We're never going to fix that. But yes, I think that's correct. I think if we had like a yield ahead sign on Rutland Road and we put a yield sign probably on the triangle, so that as they're looking left, they'll know they have to yield. And then a yield to oncoming traffic sign on the ball field side facing down, that should probably cover it.
Yeah, I tried finding one that said, you know, like yield for, uh, the oncoming traffic signal for left turn, but I couldn't find one that had it all on one.
Many were, yeah, too many were.
Too much.
Well, they have a little white one too that you can.
That's nice.
Put on the top of the bottom. I showed Harold, so, but.
If you have too much to read, they'll ignore it. Why don't you just send us an email requesting what you want for signs? We'll get it on the next meeting, take a vote and approve it. All right. Then Harold can put them up. So through the name.
Okay. Okay, very good. Any other discussion on the road sign for Ware Corner Road?
I do have a sign, uh, question for you that doesn't have to do with Ware Corner. The sign that's on the, uh, Berry Road side of the school, we need to change that sign because the times are wrong.
Yes.
That says do not enter. So people are entering that road and they go in the wrong way to get to the school. It doesn't happen often, but it does happen.
Yeah.
They drive right down into the buses with the kids getting.
Right.
Drop off and pick up times.
So the drop off and pick up times have changed.
Okay.
So we need to, to change that sign.
The, uh, the lights need to be adjusted as well. A lot of times when I leave at midnight, the, the school lights are. So I'm going, just, just the.
While we're picking up.
I don't, I don't know, I don't know if they have those app, but.
Standard times coming.
Yeah.
It will be right on the money.
Six weeks.
My question, where would be signs for all these changes? Whose budget would that be coming out of?
By way.
By way. Okay.
Just the budget that could cut, and we're going to have to replenish some of it so we have enough.
That's the one.
Yeah. With the street lines?
Street lines and signs.
And signs, yeah.
I already used some to paint all the lines in parking lots and stops on. That gets full to all the street lines. Put a couple of other signs coming for this, these lines, signs are missing on hunt, too.
Yeah.
Okay, again, very good.
Maybe you have the science.
Okay, continuing advertisement. Accountant and town clerk. What would the board like to do with that?
Do the town clerk.
Well, I agree wholeheartedly on that one.
We've got to get moving on that.
What about the accountant?
Say yes, but where we're going to the new radar system, we should probably hold up.
I agree on that one. What's your input?
Yeah, same thing. I mean, are we looking at going with a, a contract with, uh, the existing accountant at the end of this year?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
They're going to start doing the Vadar, doing the conversion. We're giving them permission in December. We're going to take a vote on part of it tonight anyway, that we're going to do that in, all in on that program, getting it done. Don't want to hire a new accountant while we're working on that. That wouldn't be a fair thing to do for anybody. Once that's done, then we can reconsider what to do about the accountant or stay with the company that we're with.
Yeah.
Personally, I like the company we're with because they're keeping up to date with everything perfectly.
They're doing everything, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we will send out the ad for town clerk.
And remove the one for the accountant even on the one side?
We'll wait on it until probably next fiscal year.
Okay.
Keep the one for the clerk though.
Oh, the clerk, we need to get it.
Yeah, no, you just, you said.
Re-advertise it.
You said it the other way.
Sorry. Okay, no, we, we need the town clerk, so.
Okay.
Chris has been gracious enough to keep coming and helping out, and our new assistant clerk is working very hard and she's catching up, but even she said yesterday, she said, I can't, could never imagine before working in this position, all the detail was, that was involved. And lack of cooperation you get from the state. They don't answer your emails and you get stuck on election times.
Yeah.
So, um, we do need somebody
To suggest.
To give Chris a break.
Take the board health next.
Will do. Okay, we're making a slight change on our agenda. We have the Board of Health present with us. They would like to address the Board of Selectmen.
Yes, thank you. Um, so as we all know, Erin Langlois has resigned. He was our chairperson. Um, so Sue, myself, and Ariana are left to try to, so we are here to try to get some parameters and guidance on how we will fill the third seat. Whether it's an interim role, um, whether it's for his full term, uh, but we definitely need the help, um, with the third seat.
The select board can appoint an interim until the next election.
Until the next election, okay. I'm taking notes.
And then that would be on the ballot for the remainder of that term.
His term, yeah.
Mm-hmm, which would be two years.
Two years.
So then at the next election, it would be a two-year term.
Right, yes, because that would complete the three-year term.
So do we need permission to promote this on our Facebook page, the third seat? Like to townspeople, or how should we go about looking for a third seat?
And advertise.
Yeah, they can, yeah.
Do we want to use the volunteer or, um, the, the same application that we use for like Council on Aging when they submit to, or any board for that matter, where they fill out the form?
Yeah.
And that way, if you get more than one, then it would be, I think, in, in past practice, the con, uh, the Board of Health can assess, make a recommendation, and bring it to the Board Selectmen for appointment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Our other thought was, we do have Sue as our top, as our clerk position. Um, which is a paid position for the Board of Health, um. I think we would like to go at it based on our schedules. Like co-sharing the board, if that is something we need to run by everybody or not have a chairperson, but. Break up the role of the three seats amongst all three of us.
That would be up to the board to decide. Normally, you have a three-member board, you would choose one to be chairman, one to be vice chair, one to be clerk. You can divide it however you want, and however the three of you on the board would agree to do it.
Yes.
Would be up to you.
Okay, very good, thank you for that guy. You guys have any other questions, Sue?
We know who the chair is gonna be. Just kidding.
I have the resignation form. So, Chris, Lucy, if you say that again, sorry, talk to me like I'm a rookie, president, vice president and clerk.
And clerk. The clerk would do the minutes, would handle the money coming through. You don't have enough, you know, you could say clerk slash treasurer.
Yeah.
And they would handle all of that part, and the other two then would be in charge of all the filing, keeping up with the paperwork.
Yeah.
But they have a clerk to the admin, so Doug, do you.
Do all of that.
You do all of that stuff.
Okay, so we.
That's right. She's an admin that was. Hired till June thirtieth, June thirtieth is now passed.
We passed.
Make an appointment.
So she either needs to be reappointed or she can join the Board of Health.
No, meaning like the. Meaning the vacancy position, but then not, not be paid as a clerk to the Board of Health.
He is a volunteer.
Stipend.
I'm doing for the money, trust me.
We'll circle back to that, we have a meeting scheduled.
Okay.
Later this month, so if we could circle back to that, that.
Yeah, no, that would be fine.
Okay.
But if you, you know, if you wanna go out there and advertise. Finding places to send your ads to other than probably Barry, cause that would be one place, but.
Yeah.
There could be other places that are open just for people looking for Board of Health people.
Okay.
At that appointment, it would still have to be just the town resident, correct?
Yeah.
To be, yes, because that person wants to go up for election.
Right.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay. Good luck. It's very hard to get people to volunteer for specific things like that, you know? I know, I know you know.
Actually funny how I, I got in this role is my friends wrote me in and then I accepted it.
See what happens?
Yeah, that's how it goes.
Last name was very hard to spell.
It doesn't have to be correct, correct, as long as you kinda can figure it out.
Yeah.
But I'm sure we've two have been working so well at it that your heart is into it and it is something.
Care about.
You know, it's very important.
Given permission to do many things. That's all.
So we're working with Lester to.
Yeah.
Square up the roles.
Yes, good. I, I was gonna ask you if you're still connected.
Yes, we have to do something, which is. We're dividing the roles.
Divide and conquer.
Yeah, dividing and conquer, I mean, the board will run itself with the coalition, the coalition is very helpful.
Mm-hmm.
You know, they process all the permits. Um, there's just a long list of questions that I'm working out, but we're getting there.
Okay, it takes time.
Yes.
It does take time, very good, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Arpa, update on Arpa? We have until December thirty-first to get our contracts in order.
Yes.
On the thirty-first, Arpa is done.
Yes, as of right now, the current balance is sixty-four thousand eighty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents. With that being said, that was last updated July thirty-first, there are some. Um, funds that can be reallocated as well as one. Item, which was a Dell laptop that needs to be deducted for one thousand one hundred ninety dollars and ninety-nine cents for the uh, Board of Selective's office. Um, actually, Board of Health being here, if I may, and maybe they wanna talk about it at their meeting. Uh, you guys had ten thousand dollars allocated, I know with that funds, there was a trailer purchased for seven thousand ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents. With the remaining balance of two thousand nine hundred and fifty cents, is there um. I don't know if you guys had any other plans with that money, if not, it would be reallocated back to Arpa. To be used for, for something else by the board.
We get a bunch of stuff donated.
You know, is that something that you guys wanna discuss or do you wanna just reallocate it?
Oh, yeah.
So, put it back on, yeah, return it, okay.
Okay. You have enough equipment and everything that you knew you need.
We do.
We need another trailer at this. Even to where it's gonna take me like.
Is that trailer full?
I don't, I didn't, I didn't even know where the trailer was, I gotta go look in it.
Backed up behind the.
Behind the fire station, yeah.
Also, the um, O K M Center School Water Heater, there was an allocation of sixteen thousand. The final invoice was fourteen-five, that has been completed and installed, so we have fifteen hundred dollars to be. Uh, returned back to Arpa funds, is that okay with the board?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that was on.
And there's still the MMA meeting with a balance of fourteen, one thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-six cents. Do you guys wanna carry that over or return it? Are there any future meetings or just kinda keep it there for now?
I would say return it.
It's fine, yeah. And then um, I know that the, I had spoken with the. Uh. Police chief and there was that six thousand dollars that was allocated for extra patrolling um. The month of July through September, Thursday, Friday, Saturdays.
Yeah, it can be reallocated.
The full amount?
Yep.
Think, if that's okay with the board?
Yeah. Okay, return.
Just one question, Fred, why wasn't that used?
Well, we put it out in the schedule for offices to uh, partake in it, but we didn't really get any takers.
Nobody wanted it.
Nobody wanted it. It seems when it gets dark out, you know, they wanna.
Well, they have these new things called flashlights.
I know, I know, believe me, we've had that discussion.
And then the last one, which was, the chief and I discovered, uh, there was a. An amount for one thousand seventy-six dollars and twenty-eight cents that was allocated for uh, Motorola server for the O K M Police Department. That was the difference to cover a grant that the chief had received. I will double check with the accountant, but from my records and the accountant's record. That did get paid, but did not come out of Arpa, that's.
Right.
Thousand dollars, so it probably came out of the previous budget.
Yeah, I would say the FY twenty-four budget. So when we sat down and did that and we paid for that, I know we paid for it early on too. Um, so when I sat down and I said, just make sure you write, it's to be drawn from the Arpa fund. It went out, I don't know what happened, but.
So I'll double check, but if it did get paid from a previous budget.
Yeah, honestly, if it was paid from the previous budget, reallocated into the Arpa funds and we'll continue on.
Is board okay with that? Thank you. So, pandemic still is the dumpster and shredded for two thousand dollars, that's still lingering. Um. Well, you see the allocations.
Yeah.
So once I get all this back in.
Nothing.
We'll repost it with the new.
Back so far this week from.
No.
Also from spectrum.
No.
Okay.
What's the status of the arch?
The last I've heard is that he's supposedly working on it. How far he's gotten on it, I do not know. He was supposed to have had it up last May, didn't make it. So, he's been working on it recently and it hopefully will be up before the snow flies. It's gonna be beautiful.
It ought to be.
How much?
Twenty-one seven.
Kind of that rot.
Better not, uh, the materials they're using is far superior.
Yeah.
To the one that fell.
Using plastics, some type of plastic, yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it's for the seven.
Yeah, cause the other one just rotted all the way through.
Right.
All the way from the arch, all the way down to.
I remember when they replaced it.
That one?
Yeah.
That was done two thousand twelve.
Right.
That should have been able to last longer.
A long time.
They should have used P T.
But it didn't. And I think nobody really saw the inside of it until it was done, it looked really nice, but not good enough. Okay, any questions or any other comments on the Arpa fund?
Library well is complete.
Yes, I know that the library, uh, the, uh, the director said that the, they will be using the full sixty-five hundred dollars for the. Roof and repairs. And they found another issue, so I think that they were, she was gonna see if she could work it out with their budget or. Bring it back to the board.
They've been finding a lot of issues this year. Expensive year.
Well, maintaining the buildings.
Yeah.
Alright.
So they're gonna get back to us on.
So that's about eleven thousand eight hundred or so.
Okay.
Seven hundred, that's gonna be reallocated back to Arpa.
Okay. Well, we're moving right along with it, so that's good. Anything else with Arpa?
So the Vader software. Expenditure tonight from the Arpa.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, after the meeting with Finance Committee recommending um, go with the lump.
Yes.
The lump sum.
Yeah, we are.
Maribel brought up the. Fifty thousand.
Yes.
We have to. How did you word that? Welcome in.
Well, I know that anything after fifty thousand, you, it has to be sealed bids, and I believe even with a state contract, so this one is. Which I will double check with Lori, I could be wrong, it's fifty thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars. So it's just kinda, and that's the, that's option one.
Isn't there an exemption?
I, they might be, so I'll double check, but I mean, you guys.
Insurance, I think there's exemptions for.
Okay.
Yeah, the double check it.
Yeah, I'll double check, but. If that doesn't apply, you know, there's that option of the fifty thousand the first year, then ten thousand and change. Remaining for the next five years, if you go with the less lump sum, it's seventeen thousand and something for six years straight. And then it'll significantly drop no matter what.
It'll drop, yeah.
Thousand.
Yes.
First three.
Three years, yeah, correct.
And that was.
Cause we can only do a three-year contract.
And that can be option two.
Wanted to do it that way.
I think that's the way to go.
Option two?
Yeah.
So you can do, well, it would be even less, so it's, what was it, seventeen thousand, let me pull that up.
Yeah.
But can you allocate the uh, Arpa for a few years?
Mm-hmm, three years, you can have up to three years for the contract with Vader.
Um, you have the numbers?
Yeah.
Perfect. So seventeen thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. So if that's option two, option one was fifty thousand two forty-four sixty-five for the first year. Then the remaining five years, ten thousand seven ninety, the O two. So if you did seventeen three sixty-eight, twenty-nine times three. Is fifty-two thousand one hundred and four dollars and eighty-seven cents, that's pretty much the. Total of first the, the first year in option one.
Right.
Or you could do, if there's, you, we don't have to go to bids, or you guys don't have to go to bids, you can do option one, if you want to allocate more and do. Fifty, sixty, seventy, almost eighty thousand. But, you know, actually, we don't have that currently, so it doesn't matter, so can't do that, but you could do. Year one and two, like, there's so many ways that you can break it up. Just depends on which option you choose.
Well, these would really be the yearly budgeted.
Correct.
Going forward, uh, general revenue, where this would cover the uh, initial um.
Or you can even.
Setup cost.
Yeah, you can even do the first two years out of Arpa. And then start on year three with the, in the budget, so this would. This, you would fall rate, yeah, this would be, cause no payments are due until fiscal twenty-six.
But this is already budgeted general revenue, looking forward.
Mm-hmm.
With what we're doing right now.
Currently, yes.
So.
It's actually less, just with the.
Yeah, this. Yeah.
For the accountant, that's less.
So this is.
Amount is roughly maybe a little higher than the three softwares combined currently. Between the assessors.
You got this.
Accountant.
I do have it, I'll have it with me.
And uh, the treasure collector.
I don't know, I'm kinda thinking just go with the fifty right up front. To cover the initial startup cost of it.
Yeah, as long as there's no issues with sealed bid, which I think.
Because everything going forward is what we're already budgeting. You know, out of the general revenue.
I think that's what's income.
Yeah, that's what. Preferred.
Yeah.
Than uh, Steve.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, it's done.
So only for one year out of Arpa?
Year, year one, the fifty thousand forty-four.
So option one. Year one.
And then it drops to ten seven and we're paying like sixteen anyway.
Right, so you.
Yeah, there's savings there.
Right.
Yeah.
And actually, that'll go down even lower.
After year six.
It will, it, it does.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. It's like.
We wanna make motion contingent on.
Yes.
Double checking?
Yep.
Right. I move, we allocate fifty thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-five cents from Arpa. Contingent on Maribel finding. Clarification on.
Procurement.
Procurement.
Okay.
Um.
Mm-hmm.
To the uh, Vader system as recommended by Town Accountant Lauren.
Second.
And the fin comb.
And the fin comb, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All set on that now?
Yeah.
Is that everything? Okay.
So basically be like a thirty-six to forty thousand dollar saving over. Six years.
Yes. It would be.
Over what we're paying right now.
Yes.
Okay, um, next on our list. Animal Control Officer Updates. What would the board like to do about that?
I think if there's any further questions, we should. Take a ride over to Rutland individually and talk to the town administrator. I don't have any questions, but you guys do.
The town administrator, that would be Austin.
Austin.
I think I'm disinclined to go forward with it, just. Just with not knowing what. The cost is gonna be for. Our inspections, large animal inspector, and all that stuff. You know, we gotta do something separate that pushes us into a bigger budget. Or separate line item.
Separate line item, probably.
Yeah, with more money, so isn't savings kinda goes away.
Yes and no, we have an admin account that has three thousand dollars in it. Specifically for things like this, but we didn't anticipate. A weed or a salary or a stipend. So we do have that, we also have. Seven thousand three hundred. In the article for the.
Seven thousand eight ninety-six thirty-seven.
Never used. So we do have money to hire an animal inspector. And how many, how many bonds are being inspected?
Sure.
I didn't think there was that many that she did.
I don't think she lists the number of barns in the report, at least, not that I've noticed.
It's not just barns, she also has to do. All the animals really, and the horses and the chickens. All the animals really, and the horses and the chickens.
And she does that? So there's a report that goes to the state. People look at.
She's, she's a state employee.
That's how we'll figure out what it's worth then.
She has to be certified by the state to be the animal inspector.
Yeah.
Correct. Usually we do that around April. Is when we choose her and send it into the state. Then she gets granted by the state to take that job.
And what you thought, Lucy, I'm, like I say, I'm kinda disinclined to. Get into another agreement, regional agreement. Maybe going forward, if that, you know, things change, but right now, what we're doing seems to be working.
We either need a motion, or I can go talk to Austin. I'm not sure that I do, I don't know if there's anything else he could clarify. I, I know I've asked a lot of questions about it.
It's the guy. The answers.
Yeah. Cause I know he wasn't able to come to our meeting that night.
Right.
And I'm not sure that he really was clear that he was supposed to have been there if possible. I, I think there are things that he may have questions on.
Yeah.
And if he has questions, I think we should know it. After all, he is their town manager.
Yeah. You wanna do that, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Wanna see what more you can.
Rutland has their selectmen's meeting the same night.
Same night we do.
So he's on our same schedule, so he is open to try to, you know. Reorganize his boards meeting, but. I'm sure that he would be open to coming here, or you going there.
Think it'd be easier, one member.
Yeah, yeah, not a meeting.
No, well, that's it, we'd have to post a meeting, if we all went, or if two of us went.
That's so efficient.
And so I, I don't mind going. I'll find him. I'll find you, don't worry. Okay.
Do you want me to send him an email?
That would be, that would be lovely, yes. At least I know what his name is this time around. Can you, can you pronounce his last name?
Sagalowicz.
Close.
Irish guy.
Yes. Sagalowicz.
Sagalowicz.
I just like, I just like saying, it's a nice name. All right, we'll do that then.
All right, that'd be good.
Anything for old business?
So for old business. You got, I provided. All the special articles that are still open that were sent by the accountant, and she sent them to. Anybody who they fell under. So clearly, I added to the sheet on the side for the board to approve, whether they're gonna be carried on or returned, I know that. The fire chief and Claire for COA responded to Lori with their two items being returned. To free cash for top, to the town. But the remaining of the items are listed here. So I guess I'm just looking for authorization, I did speak with Lori, and she said I can provide. The sheet for each department, they all are aware that I. You know, would be submitted, and I'm, and they're good with it.
So the first one is that special article I was talking about. Seventy-eight ninety-six thirty-seven. I would carry that.
Okay.
Town email.
That was to the migration, I think that that can be returned, that was just the remaining that's on there unless you guys can think of anything, but it has to be specific to the article.
Right, we don't need to add anything to the email.
I don't believe so, at this point, we're, we're good.
I would say return that.
Okay.
That's the assessors.
Yes, and I confirmed to Diane, and she would like to carry that forward, they need that.
Definitely, yeah. That's cyclical. Okay. Police station repairs, that's been there since twenty nineteen, Fred, we got the email.
Yeah, I sent you an email.
I read that one.
So I'm gonna carry that.
Yes, please.
Just with that being said, I, I know that even the previous accountant from the same firm in the current accountant, you know. Articles don't expire, but for cleanliness and keeping things tidy, the accountants don't love carrying them over for multiple. Years, that one's been lingering around for a solid five years, so just.
The work you need can be done by June thirtieth.
Next year. I'm hoping to have it done by November.
So perfect.
All right, okay. Uh, street signs and lines thirty-five hundred.
Since we just gave him some more signs to look for, we need to carry it.
Money.
All being, we carried it over that way.
Yes, you're gonna need that.
Yep.
So I have that account number, Harold, so if you do signs, we can just deduct it off of that, instead of the one in your budget first, use this one.
Come on, get that, cause I got some signs in paint that I just ordered second for that.
So carry it.
What I was saying, and the signs that we're just talking about tonight.
Yeah.
You know, I got quote, I'm getting quotes now to do all the lines in town. So then when the meeting comes up, and for the twelfth town meeting, we know how much more we need to add to that account to be able to complete that.
You have thirty-five hundred right here.
Twelve, the last bill was twelve dollars and something.
Know what's in the budget right now?
I don't have the budget, I don't remember.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember.
That was one you guys, you guys took some, you guys took some other, to make the budget happen, you know.
I remember we didn't lower it on the budget. Cause we said we needed it.
We didn't expand it though, right?
No.
Yeah.
The last time the line had done it was twelve thousand something.
Yeah.
I'm waiting for, I talked to Porter, and I gotta get two other quotes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause I know that the paint got very expensive all of a sudden.
Yeah.
So we're gonna need all of that. Yeah.
The paint we used to do the lines, gone way up.
Yeah. Yeah.
Round, got it cheaper, but.
Okay.
I know that his budget for that in twenty-four was ninety-five. The requested budget for twenty-five was thirteen, but I don't know if that then got cut back to level fund.
Yeah, it's weak. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Right.
We'll have thirteen thousand like this.
Yeah. Well, that's okay. Take me with you.
Thank you.
Oh my. Harold, how much do street signs usually cost, you know, the small ones that would say children and playing or something?
Anywhere from fifty to a hundred.
Oh, that's all?
I found them cheap, I've been looking around.
Okay.
Some on Amazon, that's where I got the ones for the speedway on the hunt road.
Cause I mean, here I am telling these people, well, you'll, can we put these signs up, but do we have?
I don't do it. Newman signs, and the signs are actually cheaper, but it was. Think it was three hundred something dollar shipping, so once I combined everything, it was cheaper to get some posts and stuff through Amazon, which I just put on. Going the other day, it's supposed to be beginning next week.
Oh, perfect, okay, perfect.
Requested, fix them thirty mile house speeds.
Highway uniforms, five hundred dollars.
I spoke with Harold, he said return, that was from, I think a couple of years ago, when it didn't, there was an error, and it didn't make it onto the budget.
Yeah.
So it just clearly never got used.
It added some up, added the price that went up and think yet.
Yeah, for the budget.
Okay. Contract services, seventy-two thirty-six, sixty-nine, that's.
Keep that in case we need it for, went to snowplow, went to.
Snowplow, right, right.
We wanna.
You sent me an email, I've called all the old ones, just to double check. Ryan McCaffrey's coming back, and Chris hiding from the schools coming back.
Okay.
And we're gonna have to, I need two more.
So you have two concrete, and you need two more.
Yeah, now, once he sent, I believe it was thirteen, for this, I'll throw it on a sign down, and if we can throw, meet up, we'll throw something on Facebook. And start advertising for Pat Time Block.
You, uh, twist George's on?
I haven't talked to him yet, and he's, he's running around.
You didn't say no way when I asked him, that you'd be coming.
All the old ones said it by getting a jam.
Yeah.
Don't be afraid to call them, and they'll, oh, but they don't wanna commit to it, so, but we get a jam, they will help us out.
Yeah, cuz.
If we don't get the number that we need. How much extra would it cost us to? Hire a contractor? Oh, gosh.
Quite a big, you gotta pay the, the trucks are expensive, like, probably seventy-five hundred bucks an hour for the trucks. With the driver and everything, a little more, big money.
Okay.
We have the equipment, if we can find the people to put in it, yes, dependable and reliable.
Contractor would bring his own truck and everything, so they wouldn't use some of ours, at least to, to lower the price, no.
You gotta be careful, I don't.
Thank you, yeah, I know.
Right. Senior center coordinator, thirty-seven ninety-nine.
Yep, that was for the first year that the coordinator was paid out of an article before being added to the operating budget.
So return.
Yeah, and that was confirmed by Claire from the same council agent.
Master server, that's the library.
Yep, they, they've completed their stuff, that's the remaining, I've spoken with Lauren, got to return the hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Uh, cable expenses, sixteen thousand.
That just came out at the special town meeting in January. So I assumed keep just because, but that would be up to you guys.
Yeah, it's brand new, I would keep.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, next stamp refund has been done.
Yeah, so that had been done, or approved since twenty-three.
A while ago, but evidently not till last year.
It just, it just got, the check just got cut last month, so because it got used in fiscal twenty-five. It needs to be carried from fiscal twenty-four's budget forward, but it's been taken care of.
Yeah, I said, I thought it had been done sooner. And that's why I was wondering why it's still here with us, I, I thought they squared it away between the assessors and the, and the treasurer. Hey, I, I didn't realize it took that long.
Okay.
I don't want next amp on my ticket to have to discuss.
Next is the fire department truck. Eighteen thousand two sixty-nine, that's what Tim saved. On the equipment.
On the equipment, yeah.
Yeah, that was the, um. The vote at the annual for the equipment.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And.
He didn't need it all.
Well, or it didn't come out to what he.
Yeah.
Right. Thought it was gonna be, right, it came in last, so that's.
Yep.
Yeah. So. Was that a hundred thousand transfer out of stabilization? That was the annual town meeting. Article. For the tanker. Well, the tanker was improving the, the tanker was eight hundred and fifty.
Right.
But that was a, of a hundred thousand.
Right.
Second. Right, yeah, this was the article, to the equipment.
Yes.
So, yeah, the truck.
Stabilization.
Okay. And it was pending until the, um.
The vote.
The ballot vote.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Or the, um, debt exclusion vote.
Yeah.
In September.
Yeah.
So.
So with that, well, with that being said, all the, um, returns, it's a total of twenty-three thousand seven oh seven. And one cent to return back to free cash.
Okay.
Well, let's make a note of the eighteen thousand.
Yes.
It's gotta go back to stabilization.
Eighteen to stabilization.
So we wanna make sure that article in January has that.
Eighteen thousand, um, stable. So then. Minus eighteen two sixty-nine eleven.
And none of these other ones.
Thousand forty.
Going back several years, we're from stabilization.
To free cash.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, they had whatever point they were voted.
So stabilization is the eighteen thousand two sixty-nine eleven, and then the remaining five thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety cents to free cash.
Yep. The only other thing on new business quick is Maribor, and I talked to town council about. The roads on, uh, turnpike, schoolhouse drive, etc. And he is supposed to call us back on Friday. But there is a possibility that. We can just do it with an eminent domain. Um, which probably wouldn't even require going to town meeting, well, the board could do it.
Sounds good to me.
But the gist of it is, it seems like, um. The reason the roads were in Amadeo's name. Was because when everything was completed, he, there has to be. Somebody to. Sign it over to the town. They, you know, as the head of the corporation, whatever.
Yeah.
Um, and then. Como got involved after the. The seven filing.
Right.
So that's why his name pops into it. So, I don't know, what did she say, she had. Calls into, uh, Mr. Amadeo's attorney and. Mr. Como's attorney. And so that's, when she calls Friday, hopefully she's had. Resolution that we can. Move it forward. So she said it would be easier to do eminent domain. But if everything works out, then we'll go to special town meeting. You know, and go, you know, have the planning board send board selectman a letter, saying, okay, it's ready to go. That would probably be the better way to do it. Um, but the other option is, we'll get it done.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We need to get it done.
Cause the other side of that is. That linear footage of road not being on the town books. We've lost probably tens upon tens of thousands of dollars in chapter ninety-one.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Over twenty years, that's a, that's a huge number, if it works out, for a mile of road.
Right.
Um, that we could have been receiving, so the sooner we get it done, the sooner that'll be added to that calculation.
Yep.
So.
Doesn't seem like it's been twenty years, does it? It, it really doesn't. We still think of it as the, the new development, and there is one that's newer.
And it's done and accepted.
Yeah. I know.
Remember going by, I wanna steal dirt hills down there. They're just cutting roads in.
I remember one of Stanley Jamara's sand pits.
Big one, remember that?
Go a little cart road.
Yeah, that's right, it was.
Was that that pit, or was it kept hidden over the other side?
There was no, the pit was, um, right where the schoolhouse drive is, there was a little cart road going in there. Used to haul it from there down to one twenty-two. Right at the end of North Brookfield Road, and he used to fill the sand trucks when he worked for the state down there.
Okay, I just have one more thing for, um, old business. I had said. I would go over. The aprons on the driveways. And I don't know how deeply you want for information, but I'd like to put on the agenda for the, our next meeting.
Yeah.
I have broken it down into several distant, different aspects, um, choose whichever one you want. But I broke it down myself in from nineteen eighty-one to nineteen eighty-six, nineteen eighty-six to the present day, because that's when it changed from one fifty. To four hundred dollars.
Yep, okay.
And, uh, there are ninety-five. In that amount of time, there are ninety-five that need to be fixed. Or need, that don't have aprons, I can't say that they don't have them now, but they might. But done, according to the paperwork, I went through every year from nineteen eighty-one, I wrote down how many permits were given each year. So I've got them all added up and everything, so it's working out, but there are ninety-five that were outstanding, that needs. To be done.
So would you figure that night eighty-eight? Pretty close?
Mm-hmm.
So the, the money that's there is. Pigeon hold for that information.
Yeah, twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay.
That's what I have come up with the figures, just for those years, is, and I did divide about this many for the four hundred dollars, and this many for the five hundred dollars. Added it together. It doesn't seem so bad for the, this earlier times, it was only like five thousand dollars, but the other was twenty-four thousand four hundred. My question is going to be probably that. Four hundred dollars is not enough to put an apron on.
Not anymore.
Even one. That we know, no way do we have enough money to put them all in.
No.
We, with, it, it's just not so.
No, not to, not to run around the whole town.
No.
In one whack individually and do them.
No.
No, it's kinda. You do them, when you do a road.
Yeah.
You go to the list. And.
And.
That was my next step to take.
Right.
Is, you know, because I don't have the roads for all the people right in front of me. I just have their names. Some of them I do know their road, some of them I don't, or their house numbers even, you know? But I was going to start with there and we know where we are. I know we're pretty much where we are.
So a lot of these, they could already have paved drivers right up to the road and a lot of them may not be done.
Yeah, the ones from nineteen eighty-one to nineteen eighty-six, there were thirty-four of those that pulled permits that never had aprons put on there. So you're looking at that too. The older section. I call it the older section, but before that, there were a lot of houses built in the seventies.
Yep.
They were built before that regulation came on board.
That's kind of what drove it was the Barry Road, Gray Oaks Lane had this road.
Exactly.
That's exactly what drove doing that.
Yeah.
Because that's where the majority of the instruction was at the time.
The biggest part was in nineteen two, nineteen eighty-six, eighty-seven.
Right.
That was huge. That was huge time.
Does.
And then it came down pretty much.
I believe on the permit, it says the permit's only valid for two years.
Two years.
Does that make that void?
Well, it means they lose their money if they didn't put it on, but now it was the town will do it if you don't.
Right.
Unfortunately, that really is on that.
Yeah.
But, you know, and we're like, Billy, we don't have, even with their four hundred dollars, we don't have the money to do all of those. We have to come up with a plan somehow
All you can really.
To attack this. And I would say as a road is being paved, then do it. If you have a house on that road that needs.
That would be the most cost effective ways to.
Do it then. We can't go around to every house with a truck saying only this much for this, you know? We can't do that. We just can't. But if there's more information that you want from me going through all of these, let me know so I can go back over them.
Going forward, it's probably best to, whatever the next road to be paved, you know?
Immediately.
You know, do a quick you know, inventory and say, okay, that one's done. That's not done. Which one's on the list on that particular road?
Right.
And then you work it in and you take that extra money from see how it plays out over time. But I have a feeling a lot of those have probably been done.
I think so too.
People's own accord, even though, because the houses may have been sold two or three times.
Yep.
In the original permit, those person, people could be long, long gone.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
But I, I can make, I mean, I can make the list by street. What's the next street to be paved in town?
Little Berry Road and the rest of Berry Road is starting to get crumbly too in some spots. We have to look at the undergrounds stuff too, for culverts and stuff and the drainage systems too. From Adams Road down to the Brook. Yeah, yeah, some of that's. And the worst part of that is all the trees are grown under the road. There's a couple of spots coming up the hill and right inside the roots of lifting a road up. Yeah, that's, that's why I wonder if it's time to get some of the big trees out of there. Considering they're only that far from the edge of the road.
So.
Not even.
Not even.
There's probably some, a couple of marks here and a couple of marks up high where it bumped on the wing.
Yeah.
So you want me to go through and redo the list in another manners by road this time?
Yeah.
I just did it by numbers, whatever.
Well, then, you know, if you hand that off to Harold, he'll know.
He'll know, yeah.
Okay, I can do that. It's I like doing paperwork.
Oh, then by all means do it.
I don't, I don't, I don't mind doing it. It, you know, it takes time, but I, I don't mind doing it. And I, I have the information at my fingertips. I can find it very easily. I have it listed, you know, by month and each year and by the numbers that's on there. I know the number system, I figured it out. Wasn't all that difficult, but I did figure it out without asking what it was. So that came out all right. But I mean, like in two thousand six, there were ten issued permits and they were all done. So I said that worked out really well. Two thousand seven, they were two. One was done and one wasn't, so I can do it. I can do it. Won't take that much space, but if that's the way that you want it, you know, presented, be the easiest way, I'll be more than happy to do that.
Okay.
Do you need those folders back?
Pardon?
Need the folders back?
I do not need the folders back. I, I I shouldn't say that too quickly, but I don't think that I do. I, I think I have, I did not put everything into the folders. I, I kept out what I was working with mostly. And you said you're making another folder by the folders were this thick.
No.
Yeah, I went down looking for a little folder with, so, um, but we do have all the information that we need, but I just wanted to give you a ballpark figure. Am I saying it's a hundred percent correct? No, I could be one driveway off somewhere, but not.
No, well, the big thing.
I don't think so, though.
There wasn't a huge pile of money that you could just throw into free cash.
No, there wasn't.
It was pretty much pigeonholed to write.
Yeah.
Write what?
Yeah, I know everybody kept saying they thought it was around thirty-five thousand dollars that we had in an account, but like I said, I may not be a hundred percent accurate. I don't think I'm ten thousand dollars off or anything like that.
Accountants had on the audit, they hit that thirty-five something.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then Lori would need to reconcile it in a policy to show it to be able to move it to free cash, whatever is going to be moved.
We need to write a policy.
Yeah, she had said whatever policy. I don't know if it's a copy of the permit application would be sufficient.
Really, what we need to give her is that it is allocated to a specific permit and so really going forward, we just have to verify that a driveway X is done.
Okay.
Or not done on whatever particular road.
All right.
And then once that's done, yeah, it might free up half the
Yeah.
The tally in that account.
All right.
I was gonna come up by town, by road, then I can take a trip down the road and see what's there. Because I know, I know the numbers and I will know them by that time, you know?
I think you're gonna find a lot of them. Should be good.
Numbers changed. The numbers changed. That's right. That's another whole, yeah, that Susan knows about. But I, I never assumed. But whoever made out the permit should have known that the number changed or not. I saw a couple of things in there that changed.
Yeah.
But not much.
Well, eighty-one to eighty-six could be a problem. That's in the time.
Yeah.
The number changes.
But I can, I think I can nail it down pretty close as to what needs to be done and whether or not the person living in that house is the one that paid the money.
Right.
So I will do that for next.
Well, I think at a point, we're not at a point where most of those, anybody's going to get any money back.
No.
Just because of the time.
Yeah, no, no. We're gonna have to take a vote on how we want to approach this. What plan we're going to come up with to get this done or just get it off the books totally. But I mean, we've got six permits that are still, they, they don't expire until twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
Those would be the easy ones.
Those are very easy. They're all brand new.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, very good. And if anything else under old business? Then I will accept a motion to go into executive session.
Okay. Um, to executive session under chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one. To discuss reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline and dismissal of complaints or charges brought against a public employee, staff member, or individual voice superintendent.
Thank you. Not go back to regular.
And not go into full session at the end.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Roll call vote?
Hapikowski, aye.
Test now, aye?
Rennell, aye.